For connection. It's inbound, listening outbound. Secure shell. Secure communication to a computer through unsecure network. Inbound listens, outbound calls out. HTTPS, that would be four one forty-three. Four four wait, HTTP, oh yeah, one forty-three is IMAP, uh fuck me, uh four forty-three. Port twenty-three is uh DNS, no? It's telling that. Thirty-three is uh. Let's go, I don't even gotta blur, I don't even have to blur the screen, cuz it does it automatically, all you can see is the um, the site, the videos, and you can't hear the video cuz I muted the uh volume, so that's good. I'll just put music behind this. Yep, and protocol time. Let's uh, let's get to it. So we have ports, I'll go ahead and mark this. Actually. Uh, what do I, don't I mark this with something else, right? Uh, ye, yeah, 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 yeah. I'll just make it empty, a big white arrow, ports. And then we'll go from there, file transfer protocol FTP. Ports uh twenty and twenty-one. Provides insecure file transfer. The next is. Insecure, then we have uh secure shell, which is twenty-two. Secure, it sends secure messages or secure connections to a computer within an unsecured network. This is port twenty-two. Secure shell, secure, yep, secure remote. Secure. Remote control. Of another machine. Using text based. Environment. Uh, again, secure shell, remote access. Secure remote access to a computer within unsecured network. Secure file transfer is uh FTP, that is SFTP. Again, secure file transfer, so um, yeah, I can just put it here. So that, and then we have port twenty-two also. I'll just put it next to it, secure file transfer protocol. It's just uh port twenty-two also, and we could put a little note here that says, secure file, file transfer, basically, yeah, cool. Yes. We're just going through the ports. Uh, this section, it's port, it's around twenty minutes long, but again. You know, just for a refresher, you know, go over them, so we have twenty-twenty-one, FTP, twenty-two is secure shell, twenty-three is Telenet, that's what I'm on right now. Uh, twenty-five, twenty-five will be. Domain name system, twenty-six, I believe, is, no, thirty-five. No, yeah, twenty-five is simple mail transfer protocol, thirty-five, fifty-three is domain name system. Uh, again, eighty is HTTP, four forty-three is HTTPS. One hundred and ten is POP three, one hundred and forty-three is IMAP, four hundred and forty-five is simple mail, SMB, simple mail block. Again, remote desktop is thirty-three eighty-nine, uh, link data transfer protocol is three eight nine, and simple network transmition order, simple network transfer protocol, that will be one sixty-one and one sixty-two. We have domain name, which is, I believe, uh, domain name, domain session, and, or then I forget those three, but. Uh, Telenet, insecure. So insecure control of another. Machine. Tech base. Yep, twenty-five, simple mail transfer protocol. Provides ability to send emails over networks. Port fifty-three, yep, domain name system converts domain names to, converts IP addresses to human readable text. Uh, well, so yeah, converts IP addresses to human readable. Addresses, so don't, converts IP addresses to domain names that is easily readable, readable by humans. That's fifty-three. And vice versa. But usually IP addresses to domain names and vice versa sometimes. Well, that's a MAC address. Sixty-six point whatever point, so double digits MAC address, if it has uh colons, that will be a uh IPv six, Internet Protocol Version six address. Dynamic Host Configuration Protocol, yep, this is sixty-five, sixty-seven, sixty-eight. I forgot this one, D eight CP, uh creates automatic IP address, sixty-seven, sixty-eight. One ninety-two, some MS. Yep, HTTP, uh, unsecured network. Unsecure, insecure web browsing. Insecure network browsing. And then four forty-three is HTTPS, it's secure network browsing. Uh, yeah, POP three, that's the post office. Uh, use to receive incoming mail. So, again, uh, secure, secure shells, remote control of another machine. Telenet insecure contact control over another machine using text based. Simple mail transfer protocol, so simple mail transfer protocol, that's twenty-five sends emails over networks, sends emails. Where POP three, you receive incoming emails, receive. So simple mail transfer protocol, you're transferring emails, you're sending emails, POP three, you're receiving emails. Incoming, incoming POP three, receiving. Simple mail transfer protocol, sending, you're sending emails. Simple mail transfer protocol, sending emails, POP three, receiving incoming emails, receiving POP three. Okay, there we go, net BIOS, that's what it was, net BIOS, uh, we have the name, I believe it was net BIOS name, session. I'll put it here because I'm not trying to go there, net BIOS. Net BIOS, that's one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine, one thirty-eight is the um, the middle one, the session, I forget. Name and use file or printer sharing, or net BIOS, used for file. No one does network. Alright, so file and printer sharing, so net BIOS, one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight's the middle one, one thirty-seven, one thirty-nine, use for file and printer sharing. Yep, IMAP will be right here, one forty-three. Uh, newer method of retrieving emails, so in, an improvement. New, uh, receive. Emails. And they're right after each other, so I could go, again, simple mail transfer protocols, sending emails in the network, over networks. Uh, POP three is you receiving incoming emails, and the newer version of that is four forty-three, which is uh, IMAP, Internet Mail Application Protocol, a newer method of receiving emails in a network, or retrieving incoming emails. And again, net BIOS is one thirty-seven, one thirty-nine, it has the one thirty-eight in the middle, but one thirty-seven, one thirty-nine, net BIOS is the protocol that where you use to share files and share printers over a network, in a window, Windows network. The Windows, cuz that will matter, in a Windows network. Uh, we might stay up all night, cuz I wanna play World of Warcraft. Yep, SNMP, Simple Network Management Protocol. That will be one sixty-one, one sixty-two. Uh, collect data. About a network. And monitor status. So it's simple, just remember the ports. Simple Network Management Protocol, again, network management protocol, it monitors and manages networks. That is part one sixty-one, one sixty-two. So it monitors and manages networks and devices. Yep, LDAP, that will be three forty-eight. Three, three eighty-nine, because three three eight nine is the remote desktop protocol, uh, link data is three eighty-nine. This provides directory. Lightweight directory, lightweight directory. Allows directory services on your systems, provides directory services. So LDAP is lightweight directory, provides directory services on your systems, LDAP, lightweight directory. Uh, yep, HTTPS, four forty-three, a secure encryption version, it's secure network browser. Phone call or message, I don't know. Secure shell, secure socket layer, TLS, transport layer security. Alright, so what was that, I missed it, I was reading. Oh, yeah, yeah, tunnels, two tunnels. Uh, can I use uh, secure socket layer? Or TLS? Which is newer. Again, if it's newer, that means more secure, so uses SSL and TLS. Yep, server management, server message block. That is four forty-five. What is this, uh, Windows file and printer sharing, okay, yeah, Windows file and printer sharing. So if that's Windows file and printer sharing, the net BIOS, one thirty-seven and one thirty-nine is, it's used for file and share in network. It's used for file and printer sharing in the Windows network. But a simple message block is, seems like the same, it provides Windows file and printer sharing. Yeah, so what is that, authentication will be, net BIOS is used for file and printer sharing on the Windows network, simple mess, one thirty-seven, one thirty-nine, simple message block, four forty-five is u- use uh Windows file and printer sharing. Again, these are Windows, but uh, net BIOS is for authentication. Yep, the big one, three three eight nine, rem- remote desktop protocol. But uh, early, like I said, secure shell allows you to access uh, a computer remotely. Secure access to a computer remotely, within an unsecured network. Or secure remote control over another machine. A remote desktop protocol, access a desktop remotely, I would assume that's what the definition would be. Provides graphical remote control over another client or server, okay. Graphically. Graphically, full control graphically. Graphically. So you can see it, that's the difference, so full control. Again, the secure shell, you get remote access to another device. Secure remote access to another machine, but secure shell, that's twenty. Twenty two. But with uh, remote desktop protocol, you get full graphical access to a client endorsed server. A graphical access, you can see it. Yeah. User interface. This is not text based. Telenet and secure control over another machine, it's insecure. Remember, these are text based, Telenet, secure shell are both text based. So secure shell is secure control, Telenet is insecure control. Um, remote desktop protocol, three, three, eight, nine is a uh, remote control over another remote. Uh, client or server graphically, and it's not text based, because you can actually see it. Oh wow, that was it. That was a fast video. Then what's the next section, T C P versus U D P, T C P is um, connection. Uh, U D P is connection list, uh, more reliable, unreliable, so we'll go. Yeah, we'll go this one. I think this was the longest section, I think. The actual, let me see, this was supposed to be two hours and thirty nine minutes. The second longest, yep, uh, nope, this is the longest, and we're about to complete it, cool. T C P, transmission control protocol, connection oriented. It's reliable, yeah, we know that, it's reliable. It pretty much asks for receipt. User datagram protocol, connection list. It's connection list, means there is no rece- receipt, so it's unreliable. Wow, did my sleep really not get tracked? No retransmission. Ah, damn, my sleep wasn't tracked, fuck, um. Oh, you know what, it's probably from yesterday, I have to track from yesterday. I slept for ten hours. Yeah, because I went to bed at four thirty, I went to bed at four forty, and I woke up at ten, ten fifty six. Oh yeah, and before that, I slept for four hours when I actually woke up the day before. Yep, five hours and twenty seven minutes, woke up at eight. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so that's where five hours come from, came from, so that's five. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Yeah. Uh, sure, yeah, 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 I slept for ten hours. I slept for ten hours, because I woke up yesterday, damn. Let me have this chart, so a reliable, three-way handshake, uh, connection oriented. And it retransmits, I was going to say retransmits. Meaning it takes a little longer, because there's a retransmission. For a transfer configuration protocol. The segmentation with sequencing. Yeah, uh, segmentation with sequencing, T C P in order, sequential order. Um, but uh, non-sequential. It doesn't have, it doesn't have to be or isn't in order, use a datagram protocol, uh, no retransmission. It's connectionless, unreliable. No retransmission. Non-sequential. Because it's secure, S S H is the secure control over a remote device or machine. And text based, H T T P. A H T T P S are examples of transmission control protocols. Audio, video, uh. Uh, what was I thinking, uh, secure shell. You remote access, secure text based, Telenet's text based. Pop, uh, simple mail transfer protocol, you're transferring, you're sending emails. The net bios is uh, sharing of Windows. Printer and file sharing over Windows network, that is a net bios. For authentication though, and then simple mail block. Simple message block, that's the sharing of, again, uh, Windows files and printers. Over a Windows network. Mail, simple mail transfer protocol is you're sending the emails. To a server and pop three is you're receiving emails. And then IMAP is an improvement upon pop three, you of you receiving emails, yep. Sent emails, S M T P, that's twenty five, pop three, that's one ten, receiving email, incoming emails. Net bios is uh, sharing of printer and file over a Windows network. Uh, simp- uh, simple message block, four forty five, is the sharing of printer files over a Windows network. Graphical remote access to a desktop or a device or a server, not text based, three, three, eight, nine. Uh, lightweight directory provides a directory for your system, three eighty nine, services for your network. Uh, simple, simple network ma- management protocol manages and checks the status of data in the network. Devices. Again, pop three, receive emails. IMAP, one forty three, is you, is an updated form of pop three, uh, but you receive emails. Alright, cool. Quicker file transfers with U D P, because you're not rescinding or retransmitting. And the last one, uh, before we take the quiz for this section, let's knock it out. Oh cool, this is just basic stuff. Alright, so after like each section, he goes over Professor Dion, he, after each section, the last um. Quartz content for that section usually is like him doing an example, so now I'm watching an example, then I'll take the quiz, which is usually three questions, and that'll be it. Oh, I gotta stretch, that'll be it. Get up and stretch. Well, basically, he's going through how you could go through your internet service provider's website, you know how you put your um, I P address in your use, in the browser? And it goes to like, say, T-Mobile A and T, A T and T website, it'll show all the information, what um. Again, it'll show all the information of your network, your device, your I P, uh, your service provider and settings you can adjust and whatnot. Of course, you'll need the password that's on your modem or router device to make some adjustments, changes to open. Like guest networks and gate, guest networks and whatnot, that's all he's going over. So again, uh, we'll just go through the basics, uh, file transfer protocol, insecure file transferring. Secure shell protocol, that's um. Yeah, twenty two, you simple control a remote machine or remote device securely. Over network, but it's text based, the same will be with Telenet, but it's insecure. Then we have simple mail transfer protocol, sending emails. IMAP. Yeah, we'll just go through all the ones that are kind of similar, so we'll do this. Uh, net bios, that is one thirty seven and one thirty nine. There is one thirty eight in between, I know, but one thirty seven, one thirty nine, it's uh, printer sharing and file sharing over a Windows network authentication. Then S M B, that's four forty five. That is, actually maybe. Pause the video real quick before it continues. S and B is simple message block or simple mail block, I forget what it's, simple message block. That is a file sharing over a Windows network of files and printers. Simple network uh, management protocol, S N M P, one sixty one, one sixty two. Uh, it, again, manage network management protocol. Monitors data and status of a network, manages it. Lightweight directory. L D, L D A P, that is three eighty nine, uh. Monitor, well, it controls and offers directory services for your network or system. I think, I think that's all, no, uh, pop three, receive emails, one ten, and then we have IMAP. Which is a newer version or a newer portion of pop three, that is one forty three. Because H T T P is uh, eighty, H T T P S is four forty three. And how we remember IMAP is, just H T T P S is four forty three. IMAP is one forty three, so you don't get the. IMAP is one forty three, so you don't get those mixed up and confused. But again, a newer variant of receiving emails, a newer form of pop three, better form variation, pretty much. Let's get back to the video. Oh, yeah, and uh, base ports are zero to one thousand and twenty three, the middle ports registered are one thousand twenty four to. Yeah, registered is um, zero, uh, one thousand twenty four to. Yeah, so regular ports are zero to one thousand and twenty three, registered and dynamic registered is one thousand twenty four to forty nine thousand, one, five, one. So zero to one twenty three, one twenty, one thousand twenty four, well, zero to a thousand and twenty three. Then registered is uh, one thousand twenty four to forty nine thousand, one hundred and fifty one. And then finally, the di- the last one is uh. Again, forty nine thousand, one hundred and fifty two to the sixty five thousand, five hundred and thirty five. Yep, so zero to one thousand twenty three, one thousand twenty four to forty nine thousand, one hundred and fifty one, then forty nine thousand, one hundred and fifty two to sixty five thousand, five hundred and thirty five. We're just, we're just watching the video, uh, it's a twenty minute video of him showing again, the internet service provider settings and going through each section. Oh man, did I? Oh no, that's right, yeah. Okay, cool. Well, um, the video is almost over, uh, we'll go through the network configuration questions, there's three questions, we'll go over that and then that'll be it for the video, pretty much. Also, always make sure you stretch, if you're like working from home or work at the computer, always stretch. Highly recommended. Alright, quiz time, three questions, let's start it, so, okay, your firewall is blocking outbound email traffic that is attempting to be sent. Which port should you verify is set to allow in the firewall to ensure your emails are being sent? Okay, cool, so it shows the questions, but it doesn't show the video, that's cool, so your firewall, okay firewall protects you from unsecure networks. Uh, is blocking outbound email traffic, it's attempting, that is attempting to be sent, so outbound, you're trying to send emails. So you can't send emails. Uh, port twenty two, that is a secure shell, that has nothing to do with emails. That's a, let me, let me close my book, just so you know, we're not cheating. So twenty two, that is a secure shell, which again, securely controlled machines remotely. Text based, that has nothing to do with emails, to being sent, you want to send emails, but it's being blocked. What port should you verify is open? Uh, set to allow in the firewall to ensure your emails are being sent, because you want to know if they're being sent or not. So it's not that, we can eliminate twenty two, twenty five, what is twenty five? It's simple mail transfer protocol, is uh, sending emails over a network, so that could be it, simple mail transfer protocol, we'll save that, what is port eighty? Eighty is hypertext, uh, hypertext transfer protocol, that's for you to access the internet browsers unsecurely, that has nothing to do with sending emails. So we can mark off eighty and then we have one forty three, what was one forty three? Ah, remember, four forty three was hypertext transfer protocol secure, one forty three, you see how this uh, came back to helping you. Like, you know, how do you memorize stuff, you know, there's, it's a process. I have, I kind of compare and contrast what's different, I know HTTPS, secure internet browsing. We know eighty is the unsecure variant HTTP, so one forty three, I can verify that, one forty three and four forty three are very different, four forty three HTTPS. One forty three is going to be related to mail, IMAP, because again, one ten is pop three, receiving emails. IMAP is one forty three, receiving emails, but it's newer. So receiving emails, so these both, uh, IMAP, IMAP and. Secure mail transfer protocol, simple mail transfer protocol relate to emails, so it's either one forty three or twenty five. Um, firewall, it's blocking outbound email traffic. So we know IMAP, we receive emails, but what is sending emails outbound? Yeah, simple mail transfer protocol is to send mail between hosts on the internet. It must be open or to allow firewall for SMTP send mail transfer to function properly, sending emails. And that's one thing with these questions, they say, I watched Professor, I have a whole notebook on core one for Professor Dion's videos. In my backpack, like all the notes and everything already highlighted, but you know, I'm doing UDM just to get all the filler information. But again, you, the questions are worded in specific ways, to where you really need to read it to understand what it's asking. Basically, you need to know your stuff, so when you read a question, you can understand if the question is asking you something that's right or something that's wrong. And if it's asking you something that's wrong, you need to explain, be able to explain why the question, what the question's asking is wrong or right. Like, if the question's asking you, two plus two is four, and that is correct, why is it correct? You have to reply, well, because, so if you know it, two plus two does equal four. Now, if it was two plus two equals fifteen, and that is correct, explain why it's correct. And then, I know two plus two is a fifteen, so I answer the question. The question is incorrect due to the fact that two plus two sequentially equals four. And that's why four is correct and fifteen is incorrect. You know what I'm saying, you have to know your stuff, so you could know when it's wrong, know when it's right and explain your answer. Uh, which of the second question too, which of the following types of data should you transmit over transmission control protocol? So we know transmission, we know user data guard protocol is information, we don't have to retransmit, we don't have to uh. It's not in sequential order. We don't have to rewind it back, it's unreliable, so we don't get a receipt if something's. Received, right, or if something happens, we don't get a receipt. So the first one is in order of fifty thousand dollar stock purchase, now you may want a receipt for that. Uh, streaming video from YouTube, again, transmission control protocol, you receive a receipt, it's secure, it's reliable because you receive a receipt of the action being done. Or the message being received or sent and then received, you're notified that it's been done, user data room protocol, there is no receipt. So yeah, you probably want a receipt that your transaction went through uh, for fifty thousand dollar stock purchase. Streaming video, we know streaming video is good for user data run protocol because it doesn't retransmit back and forth, therefore making it faster. Skype phone call with your friend, uh, you're making a phone call, so. You don't need to know they've received the call because it's over Skype, you'll, you're oh, one, you're over the phone and it's again, video, music, streaming, you don't need a receipt for that. Streaming music while you work, streaming music, you don't need a receipt for that. Um, I'll just look back at my notes and I'll look at the difference, because it's streaming, you don't need a receipt, no retransmission, that's the, that's what I was looking for. So it doesn't retransmit information, video, streaming, music, uh, you don't need retransmission, therefore allowing it to be faster, but it's less reliable. But which one of these questions do you think you might want a receipt for? Uh, a stock of fifty thousand dollars, yeah, a stock purchase. It's responsible for ensuring packets arrive error free and without loss. Um, if you're doing something that must get to the destination without errors or data, like again, fifty thousand dollar stock purchase, that's a banking transaction. You will want that receipt, you want proof that it's received. Guaranteed delivery, alright, and the final question is, which of the following is categorized as an APIPA address? Okay, so this wasn't, this was in the earlier section over here, there's like uh, it's two hour section on network configurations, there's like three, six, nine, ten, there was ten sections. I did this earlier, so the difference, okay, so we have the MAC addresses. I'll, I'll write it down, so, okay, I'll write it down on this sheet of paper. Just so we can, we know that we know our stuff, so we look on here, we already know the eight dot eight dot eight, that's the Google. That's Google, now the first one is one ninety two dot one six eight point one, point one twenty three, second one is one seven two, third one is one sixty nine, last one is the Google. Address. So here, I'll put a, which one is APEP, so we'll put dynamic host configuration protocols. Uh, APEPA stands for automatic private internet protocol address. And I'll explain what that is, after, because we already learned, or I know it, we already learned about it earlier, and we have a MAC address. So I'll start here with the MAC address, MAC addresses have, let's say, for an example, I'll just draw. This, right? So this, uh, that is a MAC address, if you can see it, as we start, it has, well, MAC addresses have semicolons in between the digits. What you also can do with the MAC address. Is how you also, you can combine the zeros, it's a rule you can do. So instead of that long number with the semicolons, we could just combine the zeros. Uh, we could just compact the zeros, as you see, you see, it starts here and they have semicolon zero, 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 and then the last four digits. We could compact the zeros into each other, and then this also will be a MAC address, I believe. Because the zeros, you really don't have to incorporate them, you just combine them and encapsulate them in between two semicolons. While you keep the same binary numbers on the outside as such, and that's a MAC address. On here, um, MAC address is not an APEPA address. Now, APEPA address, it stands for a, uh, what is it, it stands for automatic private internet protocol address, I believe. And you get an APEPA address when your dynamic host configuration protocol, which is port. Again, sixty seven and sixty eight. Uh, when your dynamic host configuration protocol can't produce or doesn't produce an automatic IP address, you get an automatic. Private internet protocol address, and what we know about APEPA, it always starts with. Uh, it always starts with. This number, let me go ahead. Automatic, uh, automatic address, yeah, automatic address, automatic, automatic, yeah, automatic private internet protocol address, it always starts with a one sixty nine. And then dynamic host configuration protocols always start with a one ninety two. So here's the difference, so we have our, our MAC address here with the encapsulated zeros, we have our automatic. Let me see here, yeah, we have our automatic. Private internet protocol address, starts with a one sixty nine, I mean, same digits as a regular internet protocol, it just starts with a one sixty nine. And then we have dynamic host configuration protocol, which starts with the one ninety two. And how you can remember that is DHCP port sixty seven, port sixty eight, starts with one ninety two always. But if you can't get in DHCP or you can't get an automatic IP address through a DHCP protocol port. It automatically uh, gives you. A automatic private internet protocol address, so this happens only when you can't or you don't get a DHCP or you aren't provided this, or this doesn't work. You're automatically given this address, again, the automatic private internet protocol address. And this always starts with a one sixty nine, DHCP one ninety two, there's, again, just remember the nine, DHCP one ninety two. When DHCP doesn't work or you can't get a DHCP address, you're automatically giving it automatic private internet protocol address. One sixty nine, one ninety two DHCP, one sixty nine, uh, APEPA. So which one of these is a automatic private internet protocol address? We know one ninety two, that's dynamic host configuration protocol, I forget what one seventy two is. Um, eight, eight, that's Google, one sixty nine, what starts with one sixty nine? Automatic private internet protocol address, so we got it. Automatic private internet protocol address, so we got it. Uh, internet protocol addresses, they're either public, private, or local, or. Automatic private internet protocol address, again, automatic private internet protocol addressing. It's Windows-based feature that enables a computer to automatically assign itself an IP address, whoop, sorry. Automatically assigns an IP address when there is no dynamic host configuration protocol, uh, server available. For function, so when DHCP, again, one ninety-two is unavailable. You're given an automatic private internet protocol address, I'll just reiterate one more time. Uh, when the host uses the automatic private internet protocol address. It communicates with other hosts on the same network using this, so it communicates on the same network, but it can't reach outside networks. That's the issue, it still reach other networks. Or communicates with hosts, it cannot reach other networks or communicate with hosts who have managed to obtain a valid DHCP lease. They're from one sixty-nine to one sixty-nine, so again, start with one sixty-nine, you could communicate with networks internally, but you can't out, you can't. Interact with any outside communication, you can't communicate outside the host. Who's managed to get a dynamic host configuration protocol. And as you saw, we got all the right, one hundred percent correct. And we're on this next section, that is it. Yep, uh, I just turned to the page right here, automatic private internet protocol address used when the device does not have a speci- a static IP address. Or it can't reach the dynamic host configuration protocol server, allows for quick configuration without the need for DHCP. And here in the corner, my little note, it can't, it can't communicate outside local area network or with none. It cannot communicate with outside local area networks, or with non-automatic private internet protocol address. Devices. That is it, oh yeah, let me write my, the next section is network services. But that's the video, um, that was my study session, again, I'll put some music behind it, you studied for about hour twelve minutes. Uh, section fourteen. I'll upload this video later, it is two o'clock in the morning. Section fourteen, network services. And that is it. Thank you all for watching, have a good day and have a good night.